We'll call the March 18, 2025 Planning Commission meeting to order. All Stanford pleasure leagins. Pleasure leagins.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk. Yeah, roll call, please.
Dennis Nornmo.
Present.
James Cussell.
Present.
Mark Duzick. He's an excused absence. Uh, Wilbur Fobs.
He's also going to be excused.
Okay. Uh, Les Danesbury.
Present.
Jason Hammond.
Present.
Timothy Hillman.
Present.
We have forum.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Commissioners Duzick and Fobs from tonight's meeting.
The move to...
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing that, they are excused. Is everyone has copies of agenda now? Is there an opportunity to review the minutes of the previous meeting?
Yes, sir. Do we need a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll second.
The move and second to approve the agenda as presented, as written. You said written. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none? We have the agenda approved. Do we have any, have a motion to approve the minutes or any comments related to the minutes prior to approval?
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Move and second to approve the minutes from the meeting, the prior planning commission meeting in February on the 18th as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, the minutes in the February 18th meeting have been approved. At this point, we'll go to number five on our agenda, open up the public comment. Please be aware, three minute, three?
Yes.
Can I ask a question first of all? Why do we have public comment now and not after the new business so we can comment on that as well?
Because our agenda, as listed in our bylaws, doesn't, only has one public comment, and it's right there.
Right.
Yes.
Well, I'm Diane Anderson, longtime Lathrop person and historian. And I'd like to read to you two important definitions. One is the definition of renovation when regarding historic buildings. It's repairing and improving an existing structure. The purpose is to enhance a building's aesthetics, functionally, and value without altering its structure and layout. Repurposing is transforming an existing structure for a new use while preserving its historic features and architectural integrity. The Cernow Group certainly wasn't good at that. If you go to their website, and I got a lot of these quotes off their website yesterday, they talk about how they thoughtfully repurposed the old town hall. For those of you who don't know it, that's the old town hall. These are just some of the photos of the beauty of that building. Now let me show you Jeffrey Cernow's notion of tastefully repurposing the original town hall. Got a whole bunch of these folks here. That's Jeffrey Cernow at work. Show you some more of Jeff's handiwork. Then on the website, Jeff talks about the fact that when they restored or repurposed the old post office in Birmingham, they did it because they had no choice. It's right next to the Anglican church, it's across from the library, it's diagonally across from Shane Park. That's the one thing they did, and they brag on their website about how they were sensitive to community feelings. Well, in Lathrop, this is what happened when we tried to approach Jeffrey Cernow. He ignored everything we cared about, and that led to the creation of the Historical Society, which unfortunately today is now essentially defunct. I think it's very important that we recognize the kind of things that Cernow has done to this community. He tore down our beautiful building, and he put a tiki-tacky building, the Kinko's, now FedEx building, where the columns were coming apart, the interior had problems within a few years of being made. Because these are not buildings that they put up of the quality of the ones that they destroy. Even though Jeffrey Cernow swore on a stack of bibles if we could tear down the town hall, everything he put up would have been equal quality. The building he tore down would have lasted 200, 300 years or more with proper maintenance. The building he put up in its place didn't last a decade before there were problems in it. Now he wants to take over our school. He's threatening us, having not maintained that building for a long time, stored cookies in it, that if we don't give him what he wants, he'll tear it down. How is that sensitive to the needs of people in Lathrop? A community that does not have recreation space is a community that sentences its children to helicopter parenting, and with that disrupted cognitive development and emotional development. You can see that on many medical websites. So I do not accept the notion that the Cernow Group has anything but private profit that it is caring about because it has never demonstrated in my time, going back to 1951, that it cares about this city.
Good evening. My name is Don Axted. I disagree. Recently, at the last meeting, the planner said Lathrop Village needs more housing. I disagree. I understand that there are vacant apartments just up the road to Southfield. Lathrop Village does not need any apartments. The proposed two buildings are ugly. They overrun the historic school building. They appear to have low-priced materials that don't match or harmonize with the school building. I suggest they consider moving the two new apartment buildings about 70 feet east so that the wall, outer walls, the west walls of their two buildings line up with the school so you can see the school and it'll be exposed. Move some of the parking to the front and make the new, new west walls on the apartment buildings harmonize or match the school building. And the proposed yearly income of $90,000 rental income is trivial compared to our city budget's $6 million general fund budget. Lathrop Village does not have any money to subsidize this project. No pilot, no pilot financing. In fact, the city is currently proposing increasing our property taxes as we speak. So there's no money for apartments. So I suggest we do it right because once it's done, we're going to be stuck with it. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Laura Harris. Um, first of all, I want to say I'm so sorry to Sam Cernow and the Cernow Group that we would have someone attend the meeting who would be so disrespectful to your deceased father. That just breaks my heart every time she's done that. So I want to say I'm so sorry. That doesn't represent the majority of the residents here. It just doesn't.
You don't have that.
So I want to thank Sam Cernow for all you've done for Lathrop Village and all the development that you've done for Lathrop Village, and how good it's looking now. Um, you're certainly not responsible for people's dumb kids or kids that are inactive. So I thank you for taking on that project. I think it's an exciting project, this, this new apartment building, and I'm looking forward to seeing it, seeing us being stuck with it forever. Thank you.
Which side of Southfield do you live in? East or west?
And you approve...
Is there anyone else for the public comment?
I don't have any prepared books, but I'm probably one of the oldest, if not the oldest resident.
What's your name, ma'am?
I've lived here, Irene McDonald. I've lived here since 1969. That makes me living here 56 years. This was before 696 was built. Children in the neighborhood went to the Annie Lathrop School. We had a city hall across the street. We had no crime. You could easily walk across Southfield to the post office or ride your bike without being... I can't get off my street with Southfield road traffic. I find it abhorrent that you want to put more housing here to destroy what was the flavor of Lathrop Village. It was a very quiet, semi-rural community. On the other side of 12 Mile, Del Mar, Boulevard, people had horses in their backyard. And you'd ride your bike and see people riding their horses. That's how serene this neighborhood used to be. Now with 696, the crime that 696 has brought. My car in my driveway has had my catalytic converter stolen twice. My rear window on my vehicle smashed. Police department here cannot handle more housing. They can't handle the housing that they have and the crime and the marijuana shops that are circling all around us. Berkeley, Royal Oak. You go anywhere in Berkeley and all you see is marijuana going on. The crime is abhorrent. With Southfield Road and 696, these families can get on and off very easily and not be caught. They haven't caught anyone who is vandalized by vehicles at my expense, my insurance expense. So putting in more people whose background you do not know is going to increase more crime here just like they put buildings in, in Berkeley, and the crime has increased in Berkeley. So I suggest that you rethink this project. We have absolutely no history in our city of any historical buildings that people could come and see as a history. You go to Troy, you go down, I think it's Waddles Road, and they have a whole village of historical buildings that were part of Troy. We have nothing. You've destroyed everything. We used to have a restaurant called the Beef and Bird Buffet in one of these plazas that the Cernows had demolished and rebuilt, rebuilt. It was a wonderful place where families could go and have wonderful dinners when you didn't have time to, you know, cook at home. All that's been destroyed here. And with the expressway dividing Lathrop Village, we've lost interaction with our people on the other side of what used to be 11 Mile Road, and now it's a major expressway. So I think whatever these guys are planning is not right for this community. It's only a mile and a half by a mile and a half. And we've got crime with some of the housing that they built on Evergreen Road and 11 Mile. So we don't need anymore.
Is there anyone else for the public here?
Yes. Are you talking... I have lived in Lathrop Village since 1956.
Can you please give us your name?
Martha Quinn. Martha Lyons Quinn. My family moved here when I was four years old in 1956. I remember well the town hall. It was a travesty when it was destroyed, which didn't need to happen. And I don't understand how any one of you could possibly be thinking of putting that apartment complex on Southfield Road. Lathrop Village is not a community where there should be apartment complexes with people that we have no idea who's going to be moving in. It's not going to add to the tax base. It would be better if it was turned into condos that would increase the tax base of Lathrop Village. It is a travesty, and I don't understand what is happening with this planning commission. I understood that after the city hall was torn down, that there were ordinances put into place to avoid this very thing. So are they being ignored? What is happening? Lathrop is not transparent. I have had lots of concerns about the city that are my own personal concerns that happened with me. But it is wrong to consider putting an apartment building that looks like a monstrosity on Southfield Road in Lathrop Village. People want to be in Lathrop Village because of the community, because of the beautiful homes, because of the lovely environment. It will be ruined by putting that monstrosity on Southfield Road. I don't know how this could possibly be approved by the planning commission when Lathrop is designated as an historic site. What is going on? What's happening? Why does this Cernow have all this power? He tore down the city hall that I remember well, growing up. And it's a shame that this commission is even considering agreeing to having that apartment building put up. Thank you. I don't know. It's sickening to me, what's happening. And I have been here...
Please don't disrupt the meeting. Allow people to speak. Thank you.
Karen Harris.
Remember the AMPS.
I'd like to... As you should be. Not be disrespectful. That you're a planning commission, in other words, you're looking at going forward. We cannot go back. 696 is here to stay. Southfield Road is here to stay. We have to go forward, and I am excited that we are finally going forward. I feel like we were kind of at a stalemate for many years. I've gotten involved with the city, a lot of people have, and I just think that there's so much more to come. Apartments are part of, of what cities do. Look at Claussen, look at Berkeley, look at Troy, look at Birmingham and all their apartments. Farmington, Farmington Hills, you name it, they're all putting up, they have apartments everywhere. It's part of the mixed living, and it's a beautiful thing. It's part of the diversity. I like diversity. And I'm glad we're going forward. And I expect that if I'm speaking, that people don't speak in my place. I sat and listened while you spoke. Let's not be disrespectful. And I would hope that you would hold people to it, too. So thank you, guys, for what you're doing. I appreciate it. I, I know that there was something across, when I moved in, they were tearing down the town hall. It's gone. Let's go forward. Thank you.
So you think one and a half, four miles is the same as Claussen?
Berkeley's crime has increased...
Can you please not disrupt the meeting? Thank you.
Is there anyone left for the public hearing? Public comment section. Excuse me.
I have one minute. I have to go upstairs. I have a breathing issue. Just one second.
Take your time.
Okay. Do my best. So I've been made fun of for having a breathing issue. On the Onion, that lovely page. I am very concerned about asbestos, by the way. I've mentioned it before. Haven't heard it mentioned yet by Cernow, what they plan to do. Um, as a person with lung issues, it's a big concern. And there's plenty of developers who say, oops, sorry, we did it wrong. Then they pay a fine instead of doing it right. So I'd like to hear about those plans because they are planning on really doing a major demolition on the sides, which do contain asbestos. Okay, so, um, I'd like to rebut what Karen Harris just said about apartments and moving forward. What you thought of as stagnation was a tax write-off and purposeful dormancy. What you thought was stagnation was developers taking advantage of us and also sadly the lack of vision in our leadership for decades, apparently, allowing Cernow to own so much property in Lathrop. He's a land baron, and he's had his way with us long enough. The apartments, you're right, we don't need them. There's, there's no indication that we need apartments for a bedroom community. Start out as a bedroom community, no reason to bring transient renters who are not taxpayers. No reason to agree to a pilot tax, uh, you know, I forget the words. But pilot is a way to not have to pay your fair share in taxes. That's not what we need. Um, we definitely don't need anything put right up against Southfield Road. That would be a travesty. It is much too big. It's monstrous, it's looming, it's domineering the landscape. It's not us. We've lost sight of what Lathrop is. We're not Troy. We are not Berkeley. We are not Claussen. My God. We are not Royal Oak. We are Lathrop Village. We are a wonderful place to live. We are a quiet place to live. We are a safe place to live, or at least we were. We were a safe, quiet bedroom community where we had peace, we had tranquility, we had serenity. We had safe streets. We had quiet streets. All those things have been changing, and it's strange how they've been changing, and it's because of leadership, I think. I think you can basically indicate that right around 2017, right around when Mayor Brock was voted out, things started to change in a strange way that was palpable. We lost our community, we lost our volunteerism, we lost our events, we lost our fall festival, we lost our art festival, we lost our, our farmer's market. It's all connected, guys. It's all connected. And this will be, this, if we lose the beautiful jewel in the crown of Lathrop Village, we'll lose our sense of a place worth caring about. Honestly, think about it.
Is there anyone else for the public comment? With that, we'll close our public comment section. We want to owe business and table items, which there are none, or did you want to? No?
There are none.
There are none? Okay. Under our new business, we have our capital improvement plan or the city's capital improvement plan?
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Before you is the capital improvement plan or a draft of it. We wanted to move forward with compiling this year's items for consideration by the planning commission. The CIP is essentially just a wish list of items that each department provides guidance on in terms of what they would like to, the projects they'd like to embark on or have done and completed. So the document before you is essentially just a modification from last year's approved CIP. There is a few items that I've noted that I'll just need to, to follow up on. Mainly the items that show an asterisk as being new items. Those aren't all entirely correct, so for that I apologize. But within each of the paragraphs for all of the different departments, the first paragraph essentially explains the new items. So if there's any confusion in regards to that, the paragraphs at the beginning shows the updates to that. So the beginning of the CIP is just kind of an overall process of what a CIP is, the capital improvement project. If you turn to page 13, that starts the project inventory, which is basically just the summary of each department's requests or items that they have within the CIP. And then starting on page 16 is the individual itemized projects, those that are both new and the ones that are carried over from the year prior. And then if you did a comparison between this CIP and last year's CIP, you'll notice the items that are no longer present, which indicates that they've been completed. So the compilation of what you have before you, again, the new items are mentioned in the paragraphs. So unless there's any questions about those, that concludes my presentation. There's mentioning of a link to GIS link or a map. That has not been updated yet. So if it's per the city's request, we can get that updated. Or if the GIS map is not something that the city wants to continue to use, we can also remove it. So just if you see that link at the bottom of some of the pages, that's what that's in regards to. So I'll work with Austin to, to keep that updated if it's something that the city wants to, to maintain.
And I think that is a map that we definitely would like to keep going. And there was a technical issue recently and worked with Giffords-Whipser staff to get it resolved. So if it is not working currently, we will get it back to operation.
Thanks. I have questions. The, first of all, not everybody on this commission has gone through a capital improvement project process, a capital improvement plan process. So maybe you could briefly talk about the, on page 12, what's documented as the procedure for adoption of the capital improvement plan? So the public and new board members are...
Yeah, so each year, the city compiles, the different departments within the city compiles the items that they want to fund through the city. And so looking at page 12, figure two, the CIP adoption process, just walks you through the process on how that works. And so starting with the master land use plan, the DDA, local road plan, wastewater and sewer recreation and other approved programs. Annually, we are to compile the essentially wish list of each one of those departments. And in a perfect world, you'd have them rated. So each item that you want to be included or considered as part of the capital improvements, you'd put a rating. And so that would get factored into the consideration for, for funding within the budget. Moving on to the project types, things such as the master plan, again, local road improvements, park enhancements, streetscape updates, stormwater management and waterline replacement. So again, it's just moving through the process of documenting the items to be included within the CIP and then going through an analysis for each one of those, which is what the contents of the rest of the report shows, which is also the draft. And so based on the presentation here today, before the planning commission, after you had a chance to go through it, ask any questions, discuss any items, we can make modifications to the report and updates or eliminations, or if there's any typos and that sort of thing. And we can come back at the next meeting to have the public hearing with the planning commission. Then there's the administrative review of the public hearing where you can do further revisions and recommendations on the CIP, whether or not to make further revisions or to make a recommendation for adoption to city council. And then maybe Austin, you can speak more of the fiscal, the last item, resolution for adoption and inclusion in the upcoming year's fiscal year budget. So it's basically going through the wish list, making a rating system of, system of importance of each item within each department, and then going through the process with the planning commission, making revisions, having it forwarded to city council for adoption, and then implementation through, through the city's budget.
As Eric said, it's a process where staff works internally to get the, prep the report, put together, and have our top priority for infrastructure projects, which are public expenditures to enhance city infrastructure and facilities. Capital improvement projects must cost $5,000 or more and have a useful life of at least three years to be included in the report. The report is also used to help with the development of our master plan, which we are currently in the year of developing our process for doing so. And then we will bet it out and we will have a contractor draft up the master plan and parks plan into a comprehensive report. And then we will bring it back here for adoption based off of these capital improvement expenditures as part of the process. And then it will go for five years. This plan has infrastructure projects for over multi-year periods. As we discussed on multiple occasions, the alleyway project is one of those, which we are successfully wrapping up next year. And there are other items related to the police department, administration, public services, and parks and recreation.
So the action tonight would be to provide some feedback on what we read and then set a public hearing?
Yes. Yeah, we'll set it for our April meeting, April 15.
For those of us who have not gone through this process, the first time I went through the process, we... the first time I went through the process, we spent a lot of time going through the capital improvement plan to finally understand that each department in the city is required to go through their portion of the plan. They're required to rank it themselves. The reason that it comes before the planning commission basically is because it ties to the master plan. And anything tied to the master plan has to be set for a public hearing through planning commission. So before, when I first started, unfortunately, we spent a lot of time trying to second guess people like, why does the police department want such, why does the police department want this? That's really not our responsibility. Our responsibility is to make sure that the department heads have done their job by putting it in the plan. And then we can address what we see in the plan, and then basically, they go back to those same people who put it together to make sure everything is correct, and then we set the public hearing because it ties to the master plan.
Well said.
Because we went through a lot to get this done before. So for those of us who are new, the first question was, why are we looking at the master, why are we looking at the capital improvement plan? Well, it's because it ties to the master plan, and that has to flow through here. But all of the things in the plan are basically put together by the department heads within the city who are responsible for their, making sure they're ranked appropriately.
Yes, that's a great summary, Les, and it is a process that we take seriously here inside City Hall. It's something we spend time on and go back and forth and get feedback from each department head. And then we draft it together so that we can bring it to you and have our planning commission take a look and provide feedback to us and show the transparency. And then also, it goes to city council, so it is a multi-step process.
There are items described in the document that range from what I would describe as wishlist items, like new chairs for this room, for example, to more serious needs, like a dump truck without a floor. When the departments are ranking their items, is there a standardized criteria by which they're ranking them? Or are these kind of gut opinions about which items are more pressing or urgent or important than others?
Each department uses their own process for determining which projects are top priority over others. And some of it comes down to budget, some of it comes down to need, and like you said, some are wish items that we would like to see and bring it to your attention. So it might not be on the decision agenda today, but it could be in the future.
And for some of the bigger projects, you'll notice, for example, some, they have the start date as a future, future CIP. So it won't necessarily be on the current CIP for 2025, so that there'd be some time to plan ahead, so that when, you know, 2027, 2030 comes around, I think for the, the building improvements for, for this facility, it's been mentioned on the previous CIPs, but it's still a future item that's within the, the table. So for some of those more significant projects, it's not as though they're immediate to this year and they must be done this year. It's all based on the needs assessment and the trajectory of, of what each department assesses. That will be a need at some point in the future.
And something that may be lower ranked this year may remain lower ranked in the coming years, but it could be something that moved up faster than something that is slightly higher because the needs and the demand of the services we need to provide and the equipment and tools we use. And also, there's been a lot of changes in the way local governments work. A lot more computer-based software programs and licenses required. So that's something that's brought into consideration. And even with the costs, when it comes to more tangible items, those have to be determined which are in need that would allow us to provide better service to the public and to our residents and to our business community, while other items we want to have on our radar and continue to develop as time goes on.
Sure, that's a good segue to my next question, which is more specific than my first. I noticed in the police section of the wishlist items, there are several vehicles. I also know that we recently and unexpectedly had to replace a police vehicle. Does that render the police vehicle described in this document as kind of moot or checked off the list? Or is this an additional cruiser vehicle described in this document? Do you know?
That's something I have to talk with PD about to see where it ranks on their items of need. But they do drive these vehicles significantly. They put a large amount of miles on it, patrolling the city, making sure that our neighborhoods are safe. So I think vehicles are always, need to be on the radar and always be something that's listed and in mind while they plan for other items that they'll need in equipment.
I think specifically, my inquiry, and I know you don't have the answer right now, is about the final vehicle listed on the wishlist, the Chevy Tahoe police vehicle replacement. I'm curious to know if that has already been replaced and perhaps can leave the list or be marked as complete based on the recent purchase.
Yeah, I can talk with our fleet chief and see where it ranks currently.
Lieutenant Zhang did reference at the city council meeting that because of the unintended replacement of the patrol vehicle, that this, they wouldn't be coming back to you, to the council next year asking for another one. So I, while I agree with you that they're always looking to improve their fleet, it's in all likelihood that this specific entry for 2026 has been fulfilled already.
I noticed that in the tables in the second half of the document, there's an item for ranking, but they all say TBD. What happened? How come we didn't get ranks?
We never received any ranking on the forms. So we received the forms, but I'm not sure behind the scenes how much it's pushed to get a ranking from each of the departments. So I don't know, you can speak more to that, Austin, but...
That is something we can look into to see, I think these are items that we see some of being an immediate need and others being something that we need to keep an eye on and keep tracking as we move forward because times change and needs change. So that's something I can go back and talk with staff and see if we can get a ranking for the final draft.
I think that would be helpful because it will, it should provide helpful information to the city administrator and the department heads as they're making decisions about, you know, which projects to prioritize over other projects and have some documentation that supports those decisions. And I mean, you made a good point, Austin, that you might have a project rank one in, for a different department and a project rank 10 for a department, but something happens, maybe we get a grant or, you know, there's a cooperative project that we do with another city that, or with the road commission, right, that forces that lower ranked project to actually jump to the top of the, the list just to take advantage of economies of scale or cooperative spending and things like that.
And that's something with the recent vehicle purchase for the police department. It was bought off of the state contract. So, and, and that's something that, I liked your point on regional cooperation. I think that's something we need more of and working closely at the city level with Southfield and Oak Park as well as Berkeley, and also working with regional commissions like the road commission, the county, Main Street Oakland County, and trying to make sure that we are utilizing our resources best as possible and also maximizing the use out of them. It was something that we may need not on a more regular basis. Because you'll see a lot of times, cities will borrow the barriers for festivals and street fairs from other cities because that cities will actually put their logo on it. So those type of items, we wouldn't need to use them on a regular basis, but larger communities like Southfield would, and we may have an opportunity to, to share those resources. And that goes along with many other items as well that we could work together and cooperate on.
I did have a question about a specific line item. In the Department of Public Services list, this is on the bottom of page 19, the DPS building remodel or rebuild. I know that we're applying for grants
Yes.
to support that project, but the funding source is listed here as general and water and sewer. Other projects that are in the list have funding sources listed as grants. Like there's one that references the request to Gary Peters office to include us with congressional directed spending request. So just, I think that should be updated to reflect that we are pursuing a grant to support that project.
We will make that correction and make sure that it's identified, and we are going for more grants. We are looking for those both here in state and the federal level.
Great.
I have a question, a couple of questions. Since I understand that we're not here to approve a budget, we're here to approve an outline of important projects. Regarding roads, there's, there are two or three references to investments on 11 Mile Road, but not one of them touches the concern that I have. Lathrop, as you may know, Lathrop Boulevard crosses the 11 Mile Service Drive and the bridge, and it's a point where many accidents occur. I proposed something to the city council two or three years ago, a fairly simple project, a big painted rectangle where those streets intersect and a big fat X in the middle of it. And all that will accomplish is that it explains that little sign to the side, please, please do not block intersection. And what that applies to is when the traffic backs up from the, from the stoplight at Southfield, people should stop behind the block, behind the, the to be created big X and rectangle instead of just drifting right up across it. What happens is two or three cars will figure that out, and the drivers will figure that out and makes, and, and sort of, go ahead, go ahead, the fourth lane over. Somebody comes down that lane 50 miles an hour, at the same time, somebody finally gets up the courage to cross, and you have a terrible accident. We've had several of those. And it's so easy to address, and it should be in the plan.
Okay, I, I absolutely agree with that because I, I take that intersection on my way out of town every day on Lathrop and crossing 11 Mile. And you're right, that fourth lane can be terrifying because vehicles, especially when it's larger SUVs and pickup trucks, they, the view gets blocked. And people don't expect people coming from Lathrop Boulevard intersecting 11 Mile. And people may not see those markings on the road as being effective, but they are. Cities use those.
They, they really are.
Yeah, people see them.
There's a place on 9 Mile where the exit from, I guess it's I-5, which is, becomes Grand River, where that comes onto 9 Mile. And there's a big painted intersection, people get it. You know, traffic starts backing up, they, they respect that space so that people can come in that way. So anyway, if you assure me that it's going to be called to the attention of the planners, I appreciate that very much.
I personally would like to see them put in a light.
Light at the intersection?
Yeah, I mean, it is, even the X, I don't think it's going to do enough to stop because people are coming off the stop sign on this, on 11 Mile, they're coming up off of 696, and just as one clears up, the other one, you know, speeds up, they don't stop at those stop signs.
I think you, sorry not to cut you off, but that's a great point, is that there are two different type of vehicles coming through that intersection. There are ones who are driving at a neighborhood street speed and others who are coming off the expressway. It can be quite alarming when you see it. Yes. And there is a sign there that does not permit cars to turn right onto Lathrop Boulevard, but there's nothing addressing coming off Lathrop Boulevard intersecting 11 Mile. And people will recognize those Xs, and they'll eventually, you know, people will recognize it, but it may not be enough. It's a start.
I've lived in many states, and Michigan drivers are the worst. They know everything.
Anyway, we give hope, we give hope to people waiting in line. There may be an opportunity to get a glass.
You're right, the cars do back up on Lathrop Boulevard waiting to cross. And there's times where I've given up on it and gone to 12 Mile instead. So I think that's a great idea, Dennis. And, and James, I think you're right that it may not be enough, but it could be a good start.
I'll weigh in on this as well because this is something that the city has, has taken efforts to work with MDOT. And when I say work with MDOT, I use that term loosely. But the police chief did propose some intersection changes to that overpass bridge back in 2023, and MDOT declined to accept those, so that nothing ever came to fruition with that. But it is worth, your point, it is worth kind of going back, especially with the construction that's going on now and, and the relatively low cost of striking a road.
Yeah, with all the millions that are being proposed, we should be able to put that project in fairly early, that's my thing. I have another point. This pertains to the plans for the parks, and it applies to all three of them. You use a term, inclusive playscapes. It sounds like a hip thing to say, but it's, has very real relevance for my family. We have a child that is, to use a broad term, neurologically disabled. And, and that, she sees an open gate and starts running for it, you can scream at her and she will not process what you're saying. And I've had that happen, the open gate in the backyard and, oh my God, there she is, heading right straight out to the intersection of Lathrop and Cambridge. Simple solution, small fences. It doesn't have to be a four-foot fence, it could be a three-foot fence. But my wife is very reluctant to take that child to this playground right here because there's no fence between it and Southfield Road. And I just think we have a chance to address that.
And now's the time to have those type of conversations because we're still in the planning process for the playscape. We do have renderings, we do have proposals, but we are looking for the final funding to get that project on. And I think, and we are, our goal is to have it to be an inclusive play area where all can come. And I think you're also right, if you do have that fence there, you may draw in more people from around the, the city and the community who may not otherwise come to that playscape specifically. It could be a draw for them.
I did develop one such park in Detroit, the Weiss, Carl Weiss Park on, anyway, we had to deal, include several features, including a climbing feature that a kid could slide off the wheelchair and work his way up to the top. Kids love climbing projects.
I, I remember during the meeting we had when you applied to be on the planning commission, and we went over the park and it was a fabulously designed park, it really was, it was top-notch. And I, I think we should have a follow-up conversation about currently where we're looking to go with the playscape. Actually had meeting with SimCOG on Friday about ways to get the gap funding we needed to get that project ready to go. We need the local match, we have a grant from the county. So yeah, we're still in the planning phase, and now's the time to have those conversations. Thanks, Dennis.
I want to pile on regarding the intersection. My son was in an accident there and was almost T-boned, and his car was totaled, and thankfully he was okay. But yeah, definitely, there, there is a speed limit on the exit ramp, 40 miles per hour. People do not pay attention to it.
It used to be a blinking light with their speed reported.
Yeah, maybe we should put the speed monitors out there. I don't think the exit belongs to us, unfortunately. But we also, I know that, I believe it was the county road commission that did a safety study of the 11 Mile and 696 intersection. It was funded by the county because it is noted as one of the top 10 most dangerous intersections every single year. They have that information about the lack of safety in that intersection, but there hasn't really been any effort to address the lack of safety at that intersection. So it might be worthwhile to go back and look at that study.
I agree, and that, that study was intended to provide results, so that's something we can utilize. And I think this is a great conversation because Les was discussing how and why we do the capital improvement process. And it leads into the city's spending and expenditures as well as the master plan. And these are the type of conversations we want to have with the public and the community at large when we get down over the next six to 18 months of actually drafting the master plan.
To that end, obviously, this intersection that Dennis brought up will not be the only idea people, whether on this commission or off of it, have about how the city should be spending its money. Is it part of the objective of the public hearing to incorporate public input into this list? And thereby, perhaps things may be added to it, fall off of it, or be reranked according to the discussion had at the public hearing?
Yeah, I think during the public hearing, that is the time for those type of conversations to be had. And now that it's published, that gives everyone a month to review it. And then also, we want them to come and participate while, when we do update the master plan. Because unfortunately, during the last go-around, it was during COVID, so we were on lockdown and public, there was public participation and cooperation, but now that we are back outside of that, that era, we can actually have a conversation like we are having tonight.
Sure. To echo some of your earlier comments, Jason, I too would like to see the rankings incorporated in the document. One, I think it will be valuable for us and residents to consider how the various departments rank their needs. So I do think that's important to be in place in time for the public hearing. I'm also curious if the act of ranking may inspire new additions or perhaps even some deletions. That amount of consideration... That amount of consideration might lead to changes to the document itself. I would imagine there's consultation with various people in various departments in compiling this list. Obviously, the police chief isn't weighing in on playground equipment and the, you know, perhaps you, Austin, are not weighing in on what police vehicles, the police department needs. But with that, what that inevitably leads to is different people taking different approaches to the compilation of their list. And I would imagine some people are very grabby in terms of what they include on their list. And other people may be more reserved because they fear if I include too many things, my high priority things may not get the attention they deserve. So I do think that the ranking will help kind of mitigate some of that perhaps.
And that's something we will definitely include, and I think you're right. I think, and this process is done internally with all department heads and our city administrator. So that maybe there's a blind spot, we don't recognize something. Or something that we, we think is a high priority, actually there's a solution that's not too far off that wouldn't require such a large expenditure. So it's an open conversation and it's a living document that's continuing to move forward.
And to be clear, I think I know the answer to this. When we're asking departments to rank, we are asking them to order their priorities from one to wherever the list ends. This isn't like a high, low, mid ranking scale, it is an ordered list of highest to lowest priority?
Yes. That is the way that these items are looked at and.
Sure, thank you.
One thing. There's one thing that I think all of us need to, we're not all aware of. There are a lot of things that we do, we ask, we want. But I think it would be important if the, in this process or any process, that you start out by saying upfront what we do and what we don't control. Okay, I know all about the double block box. Where they take your picture.
No, I know.
But we don't control that. So before you get a hundred people get up and tell you that, you know, I want this, I want this, I want this, I want this, I want a light, I want this, I want that. If we don't control it, we need to know that upfront.
That's a great point, absolutely.
Because what, what's, what's, I hate to say it this way, but what's a waste of time is to sit and talk about something. At the end of the day, you don't control it.
It's like, right, you shouldn't worry about things you can't control.
So at some point I could say, yeah, we got this new hawk sitting though right there that crossed off a road, I think it's really nice, Lord knows I'm not going to try. But I think it's nice that we have it. But I could say, I want a light. We don't control it. Okay, so until we can control it, then we can really only say we're going to make suggestions toward it. But I think a lot of people as a resident don't realize what we do and what we don't control. So I think sometimes at the beginning of a conversation, we need to say, before we go forty-five minutes on this topic, understand that that's Oakland County. Before we go fifty minutes on this topic, that's the state of Michigan. We can only make suggestions. So then that way we're all under the, we're understanding what we do and don't control so that we're not just kind of spending our wealth.
I think that's a fantastic idea and I think you could create a diagram that shows areas of the city that we do have control of and areas of the city we don't. We have these conversations on a near daily basis with residents and developers that it's not our right away. That's the counties. We, we encounter that all the time and I think having a, at least a section of the report that identifies what we do have control of and what is out of our hands would be beneficial.
I think that would be helpful. So what you're looking for from the commission this evening is feedback and for the commission to agree to vote to have a public hearing on the CIP in April.
Yes.
Are you all ready to vote to have a public hearing in April or are you?
More questions.
More questions? No more questions? Need a motion?
I will make a motion to hold a public hearing on the capital cities twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty capital improvement plan at the April planning commission meeting.
I'll second.
They moved in second to hold a public hearing for the CIP in April. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, there are none, that motion carries. So that's it.
Thank you, Les.
Next item on the agenda is technically to schedule the public hearing for the site plan for two seven seven zero zero Southfield Road. I will stop right there before I say it.
This is a procedural motion to schedule the public hearing similar to how we just scheduled the public hearing for the capital improvement plan for our April planning commission meeting. This is a motion to hold a public hearing for the site plan for two seven seven zero zero Southfield Road during our April meeting.
So Mr. Chief, just so you are, there is, the zoning ordinance does not actually require that this body hold a public hearing in order to consider a site plan application. That being said, just given the nature of this site plan and this project, I think it's probably in the best interest of this body to hold a public hearing or some sort of public town hall meeting to give the residents an opportunity to present their feedback on this project.
At the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms., wait, I'll say. At the public hearing, the site plan will be presented.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I'm following. Any questions regarding scheduling the public hearing for the site plan relative, for two seven seven zero, two seven seven?
Zero, zero.
Zero, zero, Southfield Road.
So just to be clear, so it's a review of the site plan and also public comment?
Yes, yes, for all public hearings, there is a public comment that is in addition to the one scheduled on our agenda.
A public comment specific to the item that is the subject of the public hearing?
Yep, before any motion is taken, a public comment is held.
So in April, just so I'm making sure we have this correct. In April, we will get the site final, this final site plan presented, have a public comment, public hearing. And then it would be a approve or not approve.
Yes.
That's the plan.
That is the plan of action and that is during our April fifteenth planning commission meeting.
Okay. So make sure I follow in the plan.
Yep, here in council chambers.
Okay.
For ultra clarity, to, to your point, Scott, should this commission choose not to hold a public hearing on the site plan? I can't imagine we would, but should we not, we will still review the site plan?
Yes.
Simply in the absence of the public hearing, correct?
So it, as Scott stated, that this is not required in our zoning ordinance. But precedent has been that when development is done in the city, a public hearing is held here at planning commission before a vote is held.
Sure, so it's precedent, but it's also in good spirit that we're providing public additional opportunities to comment on the project beyond the ordinary public comment section on the agenda?
Yes, it will allow for transparency and for members of the public to provide their input.
Good, I think that's a good thing and I hope it will be perceived as such, so thank you.
I have a question, so when, when the city's presented with a site plan that needs to go for review before the planning commission, we don't have an option to just disregard that request, right? We can't just say, well, we don't like this site plan or we don't like the proposed project regardless of the site plan. And so we're not even going to consider reviewing your site plan?
No, it is required by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act for the body governing site plan approval. Either at the planning commission or council level here. In Lathrop Village, site plan approval is done at the planning commission level, so yes.
So we can't just choose not to consider a plan?
No.
The state law requires us to consider it.
If a site plan is in compliance with all the local ordinances and standards, it must be reviewed.
Technically, you have three, well, four options. You can approve, approve with conditions, deny, or table a request. But you, you have to do one of those four things.
You gotta consider it and you gotta do one of those four actions.
I have to ask. So you have a site plan that hits everything it's opposed to under the ordinances of the city? What happens if you decide not to approve it?
City would likely end up in court because the applicant would, they would, again, likely make a case where they've met all the requirements of the ordinance and that the decision of this body is, was what they consider to be arbitrary and capricious and not in line with their ordinance. This is, in my nearly twenty years here, that's only happened with one site plan review request. And ultimately, the court felt that the, the planning commission had done their due diligence and that they did have valid reasons for not approving that site plan. And they upheld the decision of, of this body, but that's a pretty rare circumstance.
I was just wondering, never had that happen, so I, just in case.
It was the former BP or what is now the BP, used to be a bridal, was proposed as a market.
I'm sorry. So we need a motion to schedule, this is a public hearing for the site plan. This is in addition to the general standard agenda of public comment section.
Yes.
Will, will we be, will we add this to the agenda prior to the plan presentation or after the plan presentation?
I believe that during the public hearing first it will be presented.
Yeah, typically you would, yeah, you would have the development presented by the developer and their team and then opened up to public comment.
And then go back to the.
Come back to the commission for their questions and comments.
Right. Making sure. Back to, there's no question.
I have another procedural question. This site plan, I anticipate, will include first floor residential. Will this commission at the April meeting also vote to allow first floor residential or not allow first floor residential as a separate vote from the review of this site plan? Or is that all combined in one vote?
So at a previous planning commission meeting, that item was reviewed for an ordinance change. It was adopted to permit first floor residential in the Village Center. It was then taken to council, it was approved and it was published in a local paper. It is now part of our zoning ordinance.
But I understand that ordinance allows this committee, this commission rather, to decide on a one-off basis based on three criteria?
Yes, there's a matrix.
If a site plan meets those criteria?
Yes, that is true.
Okay, so will we have to vote on that separately is my question?
You would have to make a finding that the applicant has met those criteria that are outlined in the ordinance to be eligible for first floor residential in the Village Center.
Sure, I'm in part belaboring this because of a comment you made, Don, about, an earlier statement made at a previous meeting about a need for housing in Lathrop Village. And I want to remind you, Don, but also the public watching, that it is incumbent upon the CERNO group or any other developer to effectively demonstrate to this commission a need for public, for housing in Lathrop Village. So that will be another bit of consideration beyond the typical things like building materials and et cetera.
Have they demonstrated that?
They've not yet, they've not yet made that case. So I'm, I'm suggesting that it ought to be a hallmark of our discussion at our next meeting to decide whether or not this site plan meets those three criteria. One of which was a demonstrated need for additional housing in Lathrop Village, but there are two additional criteria. One was that it's consistent with the master plan and the third was that it provides, I'm butchering the, I'm very much summarizing this, provides adequate spaces for the public to convene, basically. I would encourage you, if you're curious to know the language specifically, to look back at the meetings, the minutes from our previous meeting, it'll all define there.
Is there a motion to set the public hearing in April?
So moved.
Second.
They moved in second to have a public hearing for the site plan for two seven seven zero zero Southfield Road at the April meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Are there any other items, Austin?
No, not today, that ends new business.
Okey dokey, no.
Eight. Say that again?
Number eight.
Number eight.
Oh, the site development?
Number nine.
Number eight, other items, there are no other items.
Oh, no other items, yes.
Okay, number nine, general communication, which is the development project update.
Yes. So at two seven three zero zero Southfield Road, just to the south of us, the planning commission reviewed and issued a zoning interpretation confirming that laundromat is a permitted use, allowing the project to proceed during a previous meeting. Following this decision, the building plans were reviewed and approved and the site plan received formal approval on February twentieth, twenty twenty-four. The interior facade renovations are in the final phase of completion for that unit that will house the new laundromat here on Southfield Road, first tenant. The laundromat is now in the final stage of interior remodeling. Meanwhile, two additional tenants have begun the site plan review process, leases have been signed. One is a nail salon, it's currently undergoing an engineering review to obtain a building permit for interior buildout. While the other tenant, a vape and smoke shop, is in the process of submitting additional information before beginning the planning and engineering review process. At two seven six zero one Southfield Road, the Panera across the street, construction is complete and the business is now open. In accordance with the planned unit development agreement, outdoor amenities including two benches and a bike rack have been installed. The PUD agreement is currently under review to ensure all requirements have been met before closing out the planning and zoning review. Two six six zero zero Southfield Road, which will be the new home to Holbrook Auto Parts. The revised site plan was approved by planning commission on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. The engineering review for both interior and exterior buildout has been completed and the necessary building permits have been obtained. Construction is now underway. At two seven seven zero zero Southfield Road, the property will be holding a public hearing during our April fifteenth meeting. The applicant is requesting site plan approval for the historical preservation and adapted reuse of Lathrop Village's former high school, proposing its transformation into multifamily housing, coworking space and an activity event space. The project received approval from Lathrop Village Historic District Commission on February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. A public hearing is scheduled for the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, planning commission, mission, planning commission meeting where the applicant will present the site plan to the planning commission for review and consideration. At two eight three one seven Southfield Road, the site plan for a golf simulator business was approved by planning commission on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Since no interior construction is required, the business is currently in the process of installing golf simulator equipment in preparation for opening. CED staff are currently working with their selected sign company for final approval for the golf sign that will be installed. That's all I have today, Les.
All right.
Is anything being done about the laundromat and the windows?
Yes, our coenforcement is actively engaged with the property owner.
Thank you.
Is there anything for the commission for the good of the board? Commissioners for the good of the board, I'm sorry.
No, sir, I'm good.
All right, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor, oh, who seconded it?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, we are adjourned.